...resolution so Monty can zip to Missoula.
Oh, yeah.
Find his parking spot.
I know where to go.
All right, so we've had some meetings and we had one again, open public meeting about the Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority and whether to join or not to join and what the obligations are. Most of the, we heard nothing but positive on emails and in the public meeting and with the strong caveat and disclaimer that we can opt out anytime. We don't have any financial ability to help pay for this billion dollar venture, but we certainly want to have a seat at the table. So we have before us a resolution requesting to join this authority and to attend some of the meetings and see if it does come to fruition, if we can maybe even persuade them to come through Mineral County because currently the proposed rail goes on the other, on their lighter rail line north to Everel Hill, which I think our area is much more beautiful.
And not only come to Mineral County, but stop it.
Yeah, stop in St. Regis and let everybody do the trails and the rails and the snowmobiling and the rafting and the fishing.
Subdivide and building up.
That's right. And by joining this right now, we're really, the first thing we're only really endorsing is the feasibility study, which is going to be funded by Congress apparently to see if this thing is even a possibility that they can pull off and where it will go. So we only have another five minutes to discuss it. If there is any other discussion or open, otherwise we've got the resolution here.
Along with the resolution, are you going to figure out who's going to be going and how many people you would want involved?
Did you, did you talk to anybody at Stromeyer or somebody to find out how often do they have the meetings?
No, I will find out. I, to me, my understanding, it's that one Zoom a month. And then there's probably some emails that go back and forth, but it's a, it's a two-hour Zoom. And close to boring, but interesting too.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
And do they have some that you can attend in person or they all just?
Everybody's Zooming.
I see.
And it originates with Dave Stromeyer because he's the chairman or president or whatever of the authority.
Well, when Monty was looking, I said I would do it, but that doesn't mean I absolutely have to or want to, just for lack of any other interest in, you know, Denley obviously. Monty, you're not my number one pick, obviously, but.
Well, as I said yesterday, I, enough going on, I don't know. I didn't even know how a timber sale works still. So the last thing I need to do is how to fire up a locomotive engine.
I've been in one once. I hitchhiked one from Frenchtown back to Missoula once.
And they let you in the front?
When they caught him.
I was in the third engine.
You whole.
Eleven o'clock at night, I couldn't get out of Frenchtown.
Robin, I'd like to see you take it if you're interested.
I think so too.
Okay.
There's nothing against anybody else that wants that position or is interested, but having a commissioner and with you expressing the interest, I think that would save a lot of middle man, middle person conversations going on, decision making.
Okay.
Especially if things hint toward money and maybe throw in a hundred dollars or 200.
Because I know that they do need some money once in a while for publishing in the paper, which I was going to tell Mr. Stromeyer, well, we can barely afford that with our I F G mail and our taxes changing.
And I think that's why you won't commit something.
Right, that's what I'm afraid if you had somebody else at that, oh yeah, they will do it.
Well, let me see what I can do, but I'm pretty sure they'll do it. Yeah, no.
Okay.
And those ads that ran, the word's supposed to be 900 bucks, came down to 300. M C E D C picks that up.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Because that was what we had discussed at a meeting.
Okay.
So at this point, and it remains at this point, no county money.
And other than the great big huge price tag associated with this, I actually do, I mean, I came from Albertonville, Milwaukee town where the trains ran all the time when I was a kid out there. And of course, the passenger train ended in like 67 or 68.
I think they said 71.
For the Milwaukee?
I don't, I saw passenger service ended in 1971 for Southern Montana.
Oh, well, the, when both railroads quit passenger service and Amtrak took over, and the Amtrak Southern Line ran till 79.
Oh.
And that's the one you took when you, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so maybe you're getting the 70s mixed up.
I'm getting it.
Were you mixed up in the 70s?
Very.
So then after 79, Monty, they just decided to decide on the one on the Northern Line.
Okay.
Because, and their rationale was that they don't have as many bus services or transportation options and the people would need a train to go places, so they picked the High Line.
Okay.
Which is kind of crazy because now hardly any of the locals use it, it's just tourists.
That's what we find out, yeah. Would you call it romantic, Denley? Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, that's what this is.
Everybody, yeah, I mean, they look at it, it just seems.
Yeah, this is not an express, this is not a budget bargain transportation deal.
But there may have been some 70-something you've heard, but the Milwaukee in particular in Alberton, Montana, their passenger train stopped in the late 60s due to people, well, the interstate highway was here and airplanes were taken off.
Yeah.
So ridership.
Vehicles, personal vehicles were all, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, okay. All right, well, I guess when you see Mr. Stromeyer, however, I guess feel free to give him my Argalawi Gmail and, you know, whenever there's a Zoom meeting, I'll, I'll jump in there.
I'll, yeah. He said he's in and out of meetings, he just wants me to call him or text him as soon as I get on I-90 because they send out the press release at that time statewide.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, nationwide, actually universal. Actually, I think it's.
Going to the moon.
Yeah, thank you.
In other words, when I go up to Mars, I'll hear them.
You'll hear it there, though.
Do you work for Joe Biden?
You have some ice cream I can get.
Go ahead, Denley.
I was just wondering, you guys voted on it then?
We got it right here. Normally I'll read a resolution, but this is kind of a lengthy one. By the way, did you help draft it so it's correct?
What's that?
Did you help draft this or?
No, no. I, I took exactly what they sent me, then I sent it back with putting in Mineral County and I had them proof it again, then they sent it back.
I'll just read some of the highlights, like be it resolved by the commissioners that the purpose of an authority is to provide for the preservation and improvement of abandoned rail service for agriculture, industry, or passenger traffic and to provide for the preservation of abandoned railroad right of way for future transportation uses when determined to be practicable and necessary for the public welfare. The establishment of the Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority provides that they're wanting to do this to help economic prosperity, inner city rail service across Montana, and the authority has a board of directors, a number of directors. The authority board will have at least five directors. If five or more counties join the authority, the board membership will equal the number of counties in the authority with one member appointed by each county. And I guess that'll be me.
I appoint you.
And following the public hearing, which may be continued from time to time, the directors of the authority, if they're determined to add the counties, a participating county authority shall adopt a resolution. Here we are. And it would be adopted on this date if there is a motion to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve resolution number 924.
2021. Resolution requesting to join the Big Sky Passenger Rail Authority established for the purpose of providing for the preservation and improvement of abandoned rail service in Southern Montana.
Okay, we have, was that a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, going into the next meeting now.
You give me too much credit.
Now we're here with Carol for the Forest Service update.
Okay, good morning. Always glad to be here for the monthly update. I'll start off with recreation. We're closing our campgrounds, I think we have all of them closed now. It's been a good summer. I don't think we were quite as busy as we were last year, but we certainly have been busy. Slowway Campground in particular was full a lot of nights or almost full. Quartz Flat, of course, was off just because of the construction there at the rest area. It was somewhat difficult for big RVs to try to figure out how to get through the construction and so some of them went by us, but overall it was a, it was a busy summer. A lot of people still out doing a lot of dispersion camping, you know, trying to get to mountain lakes, hiking trails, that sort of thing. And I think this week they were going to do the paving out there at the Quartz Rest Area, wanted to ask us to close by the, a little bit early, but our hosts were ready to move anyway, so that they could get the roadways paved while the weather was still good. And the plans are is to have that rest area open for next tourist season, so should be nice.
Is Slowway going by like the times there are? Are you going to go back in and maybe look at some more trees to remove out of there? It looked like some of those lodge fall might be.
We will be.
Grass a little bit.
Yep, and we have some ponderosa pine in there as well that have some pine beetle, you know, so. And Trout Creek, we'll be looking at this fall or early winter, that's where the timber crews will be. When they get snowed out of other things, they'll be working in the campgrounds. We have root rot has been a problem out at Trout Creek Campground, especially in the Douglas where we've been fighting that. So we'll be doing that.
Is more going to come out of Quartz too?
Quite a few because we have, as you drive by there, you probably see some markings. We've already marked that and that will be a first quarter sale. We just got to put the contract package together, it's all, it's already been marked. But our silviculturist, Carly Anaboli, looked at that this spring and we, we took several pockets of dead ponderosa pine out of there this spring before we opened the campgrounds due to pine beetle. And so her suggestion is we've got to do quite a lot of thinning in there to really open that stand up to try to check the pine beetle from just keeping on going. So that's what you'll be seeing. And we'll probably, we'll try to get that awarded and do that harvesting in there this winter so that we have time to get it cleaned up for next summer's camping. On other things, last week, we did a little TV spot up at Savinac. It will show on Montana Moments, I don't know, it might air this weekend, I don't keep track of the TV schedules. Just on the history of Savinac, what we're currently using the site for, that sort of thing, so it was kind of a fun little, little thing. Glacier Country Tourism and Travel. I was called by Ray Seem Friede, who's the executive director of that tourism board, and asked to be on a committee, if you will, a steering committee as to Glacier Country, she said, is starting to get some pushback in the different communities about continuing to promote, I don't know if I'm saying this quite right, but trying to promote tourism in the eight western counties of Montana. And so Glacier Country trying to get out in front of it is trying to look at sustainable tourism. What can communities feel is sustainable for, for their county, their area? And so Glacier Country is going to be scheduling a meeting, a public meeting, in each of the eight counties that's within their tourism region. And so they will be looking, I don't have a date yet, of scheduling a public meeting up at the community center in St. Regis and would like to hear from not only the tourism business people in Mineral County, but just citizens of Mineral County as to how would we like Mineral County to be promoted through Glacier Country.
That's, that's a tough one too because.
It's a tough one.
You know, like for me, you know, even when you're talking Red Bull, I said Lennar Lake needed to be, we didn't need any development there because we need a few lakes that people don't, don't know about or can't get to easy for those of us that want to. And then you think about Diamond and Cliff, you hate to deny access to people because they're so beautiful, but they can get overused. And those will be some interesting meetings because there is going to be that, you know, how much more do we want, how much more can we take and how much more, you know, are we bringing the resource down by overuse?
And I think, you know, we're hearing that and some of the things that, that I'm hearing is with public land is at Diamond Cliff, Heart Lake, and some of those is that we don't need to promote those, they're already to where we're starting to see perhaps some resource damage and local people can hardly get up there because there's such a crowd of, of other people. So anyway, there will be some interesting discussions, but I applaud Glacier Country for trying to get out in front of it.
Yeah, and you're seeing in other places too, even on the river use. They're having groups and they're actually shutting down some of the rivers, you know, or wanting to hold the use back down a little bit.
So.
Good, good idea.
It is a good idea and I understand, I really think Glacier Country is trying to get out in front of it and work with the people in each of the counties to see what do people in each county want because it will, it'll be different. It won't be just the same. Let's see. Another thing that I'm working with is a Vista Power. They're looking at putting power into the new runs up at Lookout Pass and so wanting to take power down the railroad, it'll come across, I got to go up there and look really where it comes across from the interchange there and then it'll go down the rail grade and it'll be probably buried down the road as you go into the St. Regis Lakes and back to where the, that the new chair runs actually will be. So we're working on, with a Vista to permit that. From the timber side of things, as I mentioned Quartz Campground, we will, we have that all marked, we just got to put the timber sale package together. That will sell in the first quarter of this, this new fiscal year. Starting yesterday, we had a contract crew come in and they are starting to mark on Freiges, which would be the first sale out of Red Bull. And in order to keep things on schedule, even though we don't have a full decision at this point, we have to start getting that work prepped. And so both our own timber crew is working on sales up in that area as well, so. And if you go by Slowway Campground, even though it's, it's closed, this crew will be staying in that campground. So if you drive by, you see some vehicles in there, they have camp trailers, that's where we're going to put them so that they're on pavement, they have bathrooms and garbage where we can take care of it.
Which area are they marking for, or what area?
Freiges would be in the Coal Creek area, Denley. Yeah, that's the first sale would be projected there. And let's see, we, we just had a timber meeting with our sale administrators and what our sale admin told me is IFG is looking at trying to clean up the units that people are working in, so we're looking at going from 20 active logging sides down to about five. So different ones will be cleaning up their units, squaring them up and getting ready to move equipment out. I think at least what I was told is Silverston Logging will continue up here in Hallwood and Hester Logging is going to be finishing up. There's not very much to finish up in Camouflage, which would be that camel's hump area. And of course, then we have Thompson River Lumber is still active up in Cedar Creek on the Cedar South Sale and Barber. They've got a couple line machines and a tractor side going. And I have heard that there were some of these people with the line machines that have been working on IFG sales have contacted Thompson River Lumber to see if there's opportunities to assist with any of their sales. One of the things that we're, we're discussing that will have a little bit of impact to us is whether or not Forest is going to proceed forward with salvage opportunities on the Thorn Creek Fire over there at Thompson Falls. And since I share a timber staff and timber crew with Plains Thompson Falls, if the decision is made to do salvage, that would be the, have to be the highest priority for work. As you know, you've got to get salvage marked and, and you got to get the sale prepped and, and you got to move that timber pretty quick. So more discussion, we had a meeting on it yesterday and we certainly have some side boards and some guidance set up by the regional office. Decision hasn't been made yet, but we were told by the staff from Plains Thompson Falls that there is support from the community over there, communities over there that certainly would like to see salvage done. And so Carolyn will be working with the regional office and with staff to see how we go there. It is in an area that would have bull trout and grizzly bear. So consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is probably the biggest issue that we have to figure out, how's that going to be scheduled?
I was up that way last week looking across at it and the visuals, it would really be nice to be able to see some of that cleaned up and, but I'm sure they're going to have to do a lot of work too because of the runoff. I mean, I think they'd have to do work in the area anyway for the runoff in the river.
They're, they're already in there doing suppression repair right now, trying to stabilize areas like that, Denley.
So I would think while they're on their work and that salvage could go on as well. I mean, with, even with bears and everything else.
I think they were primarily looking at two major areas and I'm not familiar with it because I haven't been over there to look at the Thorn Creek Fire at all. It was the area there by the face of Thompson River and then Graves Creek, I believe were the two areas that they thought they could salvage and I heard about 700 acres worth that had road access.
Anything's better than nothing at all.
Yep, and so.
How many acres, Brian?
Was it 15,000?
I was going to say, yeah, 15 or 20.
I think about, yeah.
A lot.
39,000, I'm going to say. And a lot of it was in pretty inaccessible terrain, I understand, that does not have road access.
And that was part of the reason, I know when, when the crews were here, remember they talked about they didn't, that was lower priority when it started because of that terrain.
So, so more to come on that, but if, if that's the decision that they can go forward with salvage, that would be our priority to support that because it has to move pretty On the silvicultur side, the crew is laying out plant, units for the spring tree planting. We have a netting contract going on, I think they're staying at the Big Sky, netting what we planted last year and the year before to keep the game from browsing the tops out of those trees. And they're doing stocking surveys on what was planted this spring to look at the percent of mortality. And so far what we're seeing is kind of depending on the unit, but if the unit is, was pretty rocky and south facing, we've had pretty high tree mortality as can be expected. Soil moisture, even though we planted very early, was not very good this spring and then of course when it turned hot and dry before we started to get the veins. So some, some units are, are really looking pretty good and some units probably will have to be replanted. How that's going to end up. On the fire side of things, we still have crew people out on fire, we have some people over at Wisdom on the Beaverhead Deer Lodge on, still on fire. And for doing any burning this fall at, at least right now, we have to have permission from the chief. And the reason for that is because nationwide, we are still at planning level four with all the fires still burning out in California, Oregon, I don't know what still is going in Washington. And so we have been asked, all the forests in Region One and other regions, but I'm only speaking for Region One and for the districts, we had to put in a list of burns that we wanted to do, like units that you thought that you needed to burn to have prepped for planting next spring, for pile burning that you want to do this fall. Where Jim and the fire people have put that list together. It will go to Leann Martin, we'll have to look at it and give her approval and then it will move on to the chief. So it will take a couple weeks to get that approval back before we can be allowed to do any fall burning. And the reason being is that the chief wants to know that if we have people and we're able to burn, then are they getting all the resources that the fires need in California? Or if we're burning, then why aren't we supporting fire if they still need people on those? And that's the reason that we have to get permission. And that also means that we're not allowed unless we have permission to assist another land agency such as BLM or the tribe. Also, we have, we can't send people there without getting permission.
Even BLM.
Even BLM. We're, we're all tied into it, I think. Okay, so I think I've mentioned before, Jim will be, our FMO is going to be retiring the end of November. We've advertised his job, we've been able to move that through the hiring process really quickly. A lot of people haven't gotten positions moved quickly, but this one we have. I think I ended up with a good caseworker in human resources, it's been really good to work with. And so I have the list of applicants, we've advertised it, have a list of applicants and we are reviewing their applications right now. And we'll be selecting a panel, we have a panel that will select and interview and send the top three applicants to Carolyn for, for final selection. So we will have a person in that position by the time that Jim retires, which is really fortunate.
Any local people in on it or can you say?
I can say there are people from the forest, local people on that cert, Duane, yes. And we are also going through a hiring panel right now for Bobby Henderson's position. Bobby was an engine operator, lived up by the hospital and he took a law enforcement position over in Dickinson, North Dakota and.
Same forest over there?
Well, kind of a flatland, but.
Timber's a lot shorter.
He will be going.
Golden for.
To the. He will be going to the training in Georgia. He always wanted to get into law enforcement. And we were looking at trying to get Bobby into like a reserve. Since we don't have a law enforcement officer here, could he work fire and then be part-time law enforcement, have the training and everything? And we could not get a slot for him. Carolyn supported it. We have the funding to send him to the training. We could not get a slot in the training in Georgia. I think it's Georgia where they go. Because of COVID, they have reduced the number of students that are able to go to that training. And that is all federal agencies, not just Forest Service, that attend that. And so as kind of a reserve, he could never, we could not get him into that. And so he applied for positions, was interviewed for numerous law enforcement positions, took the one in Dickinson. That was the first offer that he got. And then by getting a law enforcement position, they were able to get him seated. I think he goes mid-October to Georgia for the training. And then when he gets done with that, he'll be over there. But hopefully at some point, he could, he could come back. I don't know, but a great guy. And had his family here and they thoroughly loved living here in Superior and the friendships that they made here in the community. So hard to lose young families. See, on the mineral side of things, you heard me talk about earlier the Silver Exploration Project. I just got a call the other day from one of the folks, yesterday in fact, and they were never able to do the core drilling that they wanted at the three mine sites. The Prosperity up here in Keystone, the Black Traveler and the Tar Box up by Saltees. And they have been doing, got their drill pads all established and in up here at the Prosperity. They're looking at wanting to continue this fall, doing the trenching work that they want to do. But they had a hard time securing core drillers. And once they start core drilling, you know, they pretty much have to, they were concerned about with fire restrictions. Once they start drilling, they need to be able to drill around, almost around the clock, if you will. And the cost to get a core driller in, it was, they felt the bids that they got was way more expensive than what normally would be. And so they've requested to keep their bond and try to do the core drilling next year and get early on the schedule. So I'll be working with the forest geologist, but I would think that we would probably permit that. It's just one of those things. And then they will secure their sites for the winter so that they're stable and everything to make it through the winter. They did, we have had some vandalism up here at the Prosperity in Keystone. A gate was taken going into that. And there was a historic ore cart that was inside, one of the adits was removed, so.
What kind of gate, your standard Forest Service kind of gate? They dug it up?
I think so, they just took, tore it out.
Gee.
A lot of times we've had locks taken, but we haven't had a gate taken.
I mean, even the upright posts, it's down in there with a little foot on it, buried under the earth?
I haven't seen photos of it, Romans, I don't know what all, other than I heard the gate was guarded.
Hard to get that out of the ground, I think.
That would take a little bit of someone to pull those out. On land side of things, continuing to get requests for access into these smaller mining parcels just continues. I do have a request that I'll be studying more. I got a call this summer, right when we were in the middle of the fire bust and I had to tell the gentleman, I just couldn't deal with it at the time. But we'll be coming back and I'll have to be here in the next month looking at the proposal. Want to put a cell tower up in the Cruzan area on National Forest Land. And so our first recommendation obviously would be to try to put a cell tower where we already have some electronic equipment, which would be Lookout Pass. We have an electronic site up on that ridge across from this, across the interstate from where Ski Hill sits, a fairly large electronic site up there with numerous things. And also up on Bald Mountain, up off of Dominion area. And what I'm hearing is they say, well, that won't give them the coverage that they need. But Cruzan, I have not, I gotta look into it further, so I'm not making any decision at this time. But some of the things that I see with Cruzan is there is a resident elk herd that is, that's a pretty small area that the community people are really protective of. I know Liz Bradley has some concern and we work with her very closely designing the timber sale that we're gonna have up in there. But that's where they'd like to build, either that or on Hemlock Mountain.
Would, are there solar capabilities enough to handle something like that for the power?
That I can't answer, Denley, I don't know.
Because that might be another way to minimize some of the impacts.
So I'll keep you updated as I look into that proposal, but that one's coming.
The purpose of that, would that, would that cover the dead spot in the canyon then? Where you have no cell service at all, or is this just a different carrier that?
I haven't seen the true proposal to see where that would give coverage to, Duane, maybe.
And that's your problem.
I have Verizon and you go up to canyon and you lose it. But you get up towards Lookout and the $50,000 bar and you have coverage again.
Yeah.
So is it somebody else wanting to just get their foot in the door there?
I don't know what cell company they would be looking at.
Be nice to have coverage coming through the canyon.
Because you do have coverage with Verizon at Hogan, you have good coverage. And at Saltees, you can, it's a little sketchy, but you usually can get a call out at Saltees and then when you get over the pass, just as you get over the pass, I think you pick up something from Wallace there.
Yeah, right on that overpass, you should be able to sit on that.
So more to come on that one. From the engineering side, the big thing is the contract that the county helped us award is the gravel job from Hart Lake Trailhead to Koodoo Pass is going. And I do want to say, I have been eaten up with calls and complaints about gravel trucks driving too fast on that road. And so I have been working with contracting with Nate Cagle and Mike Frauley's the inspector on it to get gravel trucks slowed down. I talked to Carolyn Upton yesterday about it. I haven't talked to Mike, I think he might be off today. But I cannot sustain this taking my day and people are getting angry at it. So I've gotta get trucks slowed down somehow on there.
But then you've got that opposite of them complaining that the cars are going too fast, so.
I think it's probably some of both.
And what's, what are they asking, what's the speed limit on that road? Are they necessarily breaking any speed limit that's not really posted up there? Just probably it's supposed to be to the Forest Service.
Secondaries are savvy. Tell you, but it takes you to the gravel. But you've got the county part of it too from.
Yeah, well, I remember for a while there was any road in Montana that's not posted. The speed limit is whatever the legislature says the daytime limit was, 55 or 60 or whatever it is, unless otherwise posted. So I wondered if that's applicable to.
Trucks would be 65 maybe on that road.
But that's too fast for that.
Because I remember sometimes people would want us to go up and write them a speeding ticket and well, really all you could do is try to prove, you know, speed too fast with the condition of the road. And then that's still kind of objective or subjective, you know, depending on your opinion. Because there aren't any signs up there saying speed limit blah, blah, blah. I mean, I'm just saying.
I don't remember if there are or not.
Huh?
Yeah, I don't remember if there are or not on Diamond Road.
Well, on Diamond Road.
On Diamond Road there is.
Yeah, they're going up center.
Diamond Road is a state secondary, but when the secondary ends.
Right, right.
And I don't think the issue is so much, you know, coming down Cedar out of the gravel pit and going up by the mill. It's actually up on the gravel portion of the Trunk Creek Road and coming around some of those corners, et cetera, is where people are meeting the trucks and.
And like I said, if somebody's going 35, somebody can be scared. Because you need a big truck on a corner.
Yeah.
Oh my God, he's going so fast.
Yeah, that's a nice wide road, but you're both driving.
Yeah.
You got a nice wide road, you drive in the middle of it.
Something for future contracting too, you may want to write in a speed limit for the trucks. Because that's part of the bid process, how long is it gonna take for a round trip? We can do somewhat, a certain price if we know we're gonna get so many trips in a day, you know.
Well, I know if it goes again, I'm almost on a busy road like Trunk Creek is because it is a very busy road. I'd almost be wanting to look out and I will work with the Forest Service Engineering that put those packages together, is maybe we need to put a pilot car in there. And that would be considered into the bid price, okay? Traffic goes up, you hold it up at the top and traffic comes down.
Either that or a speed limit written right in.
Then they'd be complaining about that, Carol.
We had to wait for 40 minutes before we could even follow a pilot car down there.
I mean, you do it everywhere else.
I know, I'm just saying that.
So something, but I'm just telling you that.
You're tired of the calls.
Put a roundabout, a roundabout, huh?
Oh, yeah.
When you're talking about a primitive road with loose gravel, sharp corners, washboards, most truck drivers, they don't want to be going down over that ravine. And they're not gonna be necessarily quote speeding. Cars are gonna be speeding, but big trucks, they don't wanna, they're the ones that are gonna lose control and go down.
We need a truck on that road though, you know, as many people going to Hart Lake as there is.
Well, and you got all these boners that don't know how to drive on that road either.
I'm just playing devil's advocate. If you had the manpower, you had a Forest Service cop and he went up there for you, what would he do without a speed limit sign? And a truck's going 35 or 40 like they always do. I mean, obviously they're gonna be going 25 around the 17 mile corner. They don't want to flip and lose their life like Minnie Lager has. But without a speed limit, I mean, Mr. McGuffey could be driving back and forth all day long in his little pickup truck with the lights on. He wouldn't have anything to do because he wouldn't, he'll leave somebody on the radar going over 36 miles an hour, in my opinion, but.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck with that one.
Yeah, that's been a.
Close the road, try and meet when they're working.
Yeah, that's the other.
It's open from 5 o'clock till whatever, 6 o'clock the next morning and all week long and close during the week.
Open it on the weekend.
Dangerous truck traffic, be aware.
If I continue to get the calls and people coming in, I've gotta do something. I can't continue with what I've been dealing with. Something's gotta go.
Yeah, because I mean, they gotta get it gravelled and they're pushing. I had a picture on my phone yesterday of this time at 2:17, had a foot of snow on Koodoo.
I would expect here probably the first of the week or whatever that they had some snow. Because I had crew people working on some fire suppression up on Deep Lookout, up on Nine Mile Divide, and they were in snow.
Do you have some reader board signs?
We do have.
Just on Cedar Creek, but it's just for heavy truck traffic on Cedar Creek.
Because you got both log trucks and the gravel trucks coming out of the lower part there.
And I knew some guys that tried to go up to the lakes and they turned around with the logging traffic. They didn't want to deal with it, they understood, others wanted to, don't care. But yeah, I mean, a reader board maybe down at the bottom and just said, heavy truck traffic and give them the fair warning in a car.
Drive at your own risk.
Yeah, kind of at your own risk.
Primitive road, drive at your own risk. That's what Washington State.
Yeah, and it is a primitive road.
I mean, that way at least the cars.
Don't call Carolyn.
Because you can't shut down, well, the work needs to be done. Like Lori says, you're gonna have snow soon, so.
And without a speed limit, I don't know, people are speeding. Speeding trucks on, trucks are literally speeding. And it's probably, they're just probably being scared because it's scary to meet a big, large vehicle on a primitive, narrow road.
And it's far from there.
Somebody was calling you.
Anyway.
It is steep.
The last thing that I have here for you is I did talk to Carolyn about coming up and looking at Lookout Pass and whatever else. And she has given me Friday, the 29th of October, she has that day open as of now unless something would come up on her schedule that she doesn't know. And so she would pretty much look at probably being out here around 9 o'clock. By the time she gets out here from Missoula somewhere, 9:00, 9:30. And I think she's pretty much scheduled to spend the day with us. And so whatever, we could maybe meet here and go up to Lookout Pass.
I think if we could go over the maps, I'll get another set of what I've got or what Andy's got. And if we could go over the maps and then take a run up there and just absolutely, you know, go down on the highway, if nothing else, I could take her down on the highway and show and everybody else could be up on top. But if we get on the highway and show where the highway was built by Idaho, where it was built by Montana, and then when we get up on the hill above that, then you can carry that line on through and she could visually see what's going on. And I know they found another.
Like that whole morning?
James, I said, were they clearing for the trails? He found a monument back in there.
Oh, he did?
Yeah. And that would be an old, one of the old monuments. But I think Ron Warren had, he'd found the ones on the, across the freeway up on that hill. And I think he found a lot of monuments here, but of course, there's nothing up and down.
So where would you want access to, Denley? Do we need to go up through on the electronic side so that we can get up there and look across? Or where do, where did you want?
I think if we, even from the parking lot, that's what I say. If we look down, we get above, we can look right down onto the road or even being out on the road, look back up. But I think if we're in the parking lot from this here, it will give us.
Oh, good.
Pretty good.
Okay.
So do you want to like meet here at 9:00 and then how, I just didn't know how long the time to schedule?
Oh, well, you know, it's an hour to get up there. And probably an hour to look around and then an hour to get back for you guys to. You'd have an afternoon meeting then, kind of?
Right now, we don't have anything other than the sheriff. But I mean, we could, you know, from 9:00 till noon or something and.
You know, unless there's other stuff you need to see around too, yeah.
Well, she probably will with me and the commissioners and you all would be welcome to go. Unless you need to come back for something. And I think Carolyn really wanted to spend a little bit of time with you all since with IFG slowing operations here. She just wanted a little bit of time to visit with you about other things too.
And there's a question on that, just thinking, yesterday it came up. Is there any, any way to put a, guarantee that the timber out of Superior Ranger District stays in Montana? Is there any way that that, can the Forest Service ever put any kind of stipulation?
If somebody's high bidder, they can do whatever they want with the log.
Because the idea is some, a lot of our timber will end up now going to Idaho. And that's a change of subject, but it brought, it came up yesterday.
No, I had that written down to ask too.
I, that I would have to ask our contracting people to put the, I don't know about that, Denley. I can't say.
And you can't guarantee that it's Montana contractors either.
No, because, you know, I mean, Stimson or anybody, when we advertise those timber sales could bid on it. You know, even if you recall from the last collaborative meeting that we had where Willie was. You know, even if you recall from the last collaborative meeting that we had where Willie was saying that IFG was going to at least, I thought, request Red Bull being a fifteen year or something, long-term stewardship project that IFG could get, but that wouldn't say, uh, that that timber wouldn't go to another mill. I, I think we already have at this time, even with, and I might be speaking out of turn, but I do believe that we see timber not necessarily all go to the mill in St. Regis. Some of it, depending upon species, may go to, goes to another mill.
Well, and that was the question that came up so I got.
And one of the questions I got to Carol along with that, if, if somebody's going to come out from Missoula is to educate us on the stewardship sales. Because it's my understanding and maybe I'm wrong, but the county doesn't really gain any, especially now that we don't have a mill. What do we gain saying, yay, we want a stewardship sale when we get no SRS money doing? I don't believe we do.
I don't believe we do.
No, so.
You, you get some work done, but you don't.
But by who, by who, yeah, who, who does the work and, you know? If it's local people, fine, if you can stipulate in there, local people do this work. But if it's being shipped out of state, I, I'm not in favor of that at all. But I don't know that much about stewards because we've only had, I think, one on this district, haven't we?
We've had, you know, they're, they're, and they've been smaller, like Camouflage was a stewardship. Because if you recall, uh, when Tricon, uh, had the mill, they were requesting a lot of stewardship.
And I think they did one, uh, DeBorgay, I don't remember what the name of that was.
DeBorgen.
DeBorgen, yeah, I think that was.
So we've had some, but they've been much smaller scale.
So that was one of the questions I had, if somebody's going to come out, maybe they could answer some of that or give us a little presentation on.
Okay, and Carolyn may not be, be able to do that because she's probably not versed in the particulars of stewardship. So that might be, uh, maybe my November meeting with you all might be where I do bring somebody out that is versed in stewardship.
Would that be like Patricia Park, Parker or somebody like that or?
You know, that could, could tell you the particulars.
Yeah, yeah, I'd kind of like, you know.
So I can, should I just schedule from nine till noon then with Carolyn Upton then? If we're going to go up to Lookout.
Yeah, probably better.
Is that, okay, are you going to be with us on that, right?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have my schedule at home, but I'll look and I've canceled a few things to make something, so. October twenty-ninth, I, I have to be in Helen out one day that week, but I, I think it's a Tuesday or Wednesday. Yeah, that would be, I think, it wouldn't take long just to pull out the maps and, and show her right here to review it first.
Okay, so we'll start here at nine.
History of what went on up there for her. And then, yeah, if we went up there, um, like, I don't, I don't know exactly where the monuments are across the way. I could call Ron Warren again and get a little bit of an update from him. Cause he went out, he's the one that rechecked the points. And, and it might not even, I'll see if the contractor goes around and come along. It might, it's been quite a few years. I don't know, he's busy and.
Okay, so while we're up there in the field, you know, that might, there'd be some, any other things that you want to visit with Carolyn about?
Yeah, drive up or whatever.
It'd be an opportunity.
And I just had a final question for you, what, what do we know about replacements for Eric Thomasic? Why am I not going?
Nine until noon and public opening at one and twelve.
I do know who, there's an acting that will start Monday.
Who's that?
Dave Williams.
Dave Williams?
Is the acting, he will start Monday. And I know that Eric said they've been transitioning, so Dave Williams is a regional office employee, uh, works in fire is his background. I think he, he's like fire, safety, risk management is, I don't know the exact title of his position, but that's where he comes from.
And then their applications and interviews, when do they expect to find a permanent replacement?
I, I don't know where that one is in the, uh, process, if it's act, if it's being advertised now, I haven't tracked that one.
Okay.
So, but I do know Dave starts Monday. And I did, uh, you know, I will make sure when we have meetings that he's invited. So I'm guessing, you know, if we're going to be on the twenty-ninth, I, I wouldn't be looking at another meeting in October with you unless you, unless there's something in there. And if I have something in particulars, I can update you that day.
Okay, I just wanted to say that it's kind of a bad timing, timing is everything. We, we worked with you and you worked with us and everybody got on the bandwagon together and finally got some timber sales going. And it's just too bad that the leadership at the mill decided to pull the mill right when we, right when we got cooperation from your agency, thankfully to you. Now there's finally some timber in the forest, ready to be harvested and now here we sit, but thank you anyway.
At least we do have two mills still in drivable range.
Right.
But it, that changes things too. I mean, they aren't as aggressive to try and buy a timber sale, Thompson Falls or Sealy, because there is the distance trucking. Truckers make some money.
Well, and you know, just a concern that I would have for, for us on the district is for our sales, if we have competitive bidding for the timber, any bid premium that we get on the sales, you know, that goes into help do other, you know, whether, other forest practices usually. And so if we lose that bid premium and we just get sales that sell at a minimum bid.
Yeah.
Then we lose revenue to do some other things too.
Would you have an idea, you know, if you could get back to, to the group here within a week or something of possibly what that premium, what the county might lose, just an estimate?
You know, if it went to stewardship, were you saying?
Stewardship or, or with the mill shutting down, um, speculating what those timber sales might drop in value. And so what the county, the idea is the impact, financial impact on the county. You understand what I'm kind of getting at?
Yeah, I do.
That, that would help for the.
For the meeting.
Meeting count.
Another thing that crossed my mind with, with the two smaller mills there in competition now with the eighth largest timber producer in the United States. Will there be any effort to like SBA set aside sales where the smaller bidder stands a fair chance of getting some of those?
We do have now, Dwayne, there's a certain amount of our sales have to be SBA that like Thompson River Lumber, um, competes for. And IFG could not compete for those because they're not a SBA.
There's enough of those in the pipeline to.
So we have to give a certain amount of those and one of the things that IFG was always concerned about was trying to make, uh, some of our sales not SBA because, uh, so that IFG could bid on sales that were fairly close to them. And so I think the forest tried to work with some of the sales that would be on the plains, Thompson Falls District, that would be SBA, that Thompson River Lumber could compete for. Uh, sales closer to the Sealy Lake Mill that would be SBA, that that mill could compete to try to keep wood in their wood basket. And then sales on our district, not too many of them SBA, so that IFG could compete for those. And so I think the forest really tried to balance and try to make available wood to all of the mills that they could, you know, all compete for.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll keep you in the loop if something comes up and, uh, I'll touch base with you prior to the twenty-ninth. Just to make sure we're on schedule with Carolyn.
And I, I think, didn't you have a, did you have a set of maps that, did Andy give you a set of maps on the state line? Or he was going to, I think, and I just wondered if you ever got.
I don't know if I did, I'd have to work.
Move what?
And I know part of the problem through the years has gone along, some of them have disappeared. They're very good ones, but I've got, I've still got some.
There's more of a chance the mill will start up than the highway.
Yeah, I think it's good if we start here with Carolyn and get her oriented and thinking about it.
And then we'll show the, the area in question.
Sign it over there, meet him before.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you, Denley.
All right, so, thank you. Now we'll transition into the ten o'clock with the sheriff.
Sheriff.
The sheriff toth.
And it's not that I'm not interested, but I have to go in and practice in the band.
Yeah, yeah, how did it go at your mulling, did it rain or snow or how was the weather?
We, we had a couple of drops fell on us, but other than that it was okay.
And who won the game?
St. Regis Mulling won fifty-two to twenty or something, B Wallace.
Wow, he beat Wallace.
Yeah, it's not that I'm not interested in what you're doing, so.
Challenge, confidence, stability.
Ooh, cool. Look at that, bling, bling.
Ooh, that's a pretty one.
All right.
Bling, me too?
Yes.
Well, of course you're going to give me all my money.
Yeah.
Estate.
Wow.
Cool.
All right.
I wouldn't give him one if he's leaving.
I, I do.
You think you're going to make some calls?
Well, I do have to get to Missoula for homecoming stuff, so. I'm in the alumni band, so we have to practice. But anyway, you're, you're getting talked about positively.
Oh, that's good.
From what I hear anyway.
Good.
I'm sure there are others that.
Yeah.
I mean, there's both sides.
But at least most people are happy, I'm thinking.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, appreciate it.
See you all later.
See you, Denley.
Are these worth anything?
No, cost me a fortune anyway.
I can't take this down to the burden.
Yeah, yeah, take that to the talking bird, see where it gets you.
On the house, on the house.
Let him see that star.
Like a free, free ride home in a sheriff's car.
Does this get us out of jail free?
There you go, that's what it is. I'm going to get a necklace made there, I'll have it on me at all times.
A necklace, you're going to go back to your beat Nick days?
Yep, yep, seventies, me and Monty.
All right, so we haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, I know, it's been.
We did.
It's all over, just got back from billings and so, hanging out. Now I'm back to work for a while.
How's the, I'm getting sick of turning on the, on the TV and the news and all it is is COVID news, so. Might as well go with it, how's the COVID going in Billings, the big, the biggest city in Montana, how are we doing?
Yeah, you know, they're just bad as ever.
Are they worse than?
They're, it's, you know, everything's open though, but.
Yeah.
You know, every night on the news, you think the whole town is dying. Zombies will be walking around.
How's they having a shortage of workers there?
Recording yet?
Do they have a short, like, can you go in your favorite restaurant, it's still open or like?
Yeah, but everybody's hiring, uh, McDonald's.
Everything is drive-through probably.
Yeah, and like McDonald's are paying eighteen bucks an hour.
Paying sixteen or more.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixteen or more, I saw the sign there.
I thought it said, yeah.
Yeah, we're about to talk, but we got to compete, man. I got nobody applying, we're down a dispatcher, we're down two jailers, so we have to figure out something. Which anyways, we can start, I guess she's recording, so I can't say what I want to say, so we'll be professional going into this, I guess.
Well, tell us what you really think about your.
We use flash.
Federal contract finally came in, Ellen was looking at, she sent me some notes on some. I tried to call her before the meeting to clarify what she was saying, um, I made copies for us all to look at. I think, I don't know, I don't know if she was hesitant, I, I couldn't make out what she meant with her notes or if she was just pointing some things out to me. But it's for seventy-eight dollars a day per inmate for federal. It says eight here, but it's supposed to be ten, but it doesn't matter, I guess, we could, I told them we'd do ten, so. But somebody put eight here, I emailed the lady and said, that's supposed to be eight. And then twenty-one dollars an hour, then we have to have two guards. If we ever transport for them, um, you have to have two minimum go with, even if it's one person, go with them, so. Did each make?
Twenty-one.
Yeah, or fifteen in the, or their normal wage and then the rest is to pay their, your guys' insurance.
Oh, the overage, yeah.
Right, I think that's what that is. So, um, there's three copies for them to look at, each one of them. If they only got a spot for me to sign, I haven't signed it yet till we talk. And I guess I can get a clarification from Ellen, I want to sign it as soon as possible because right now we have five veteran inmates. Well, we have three, but they're bringing us two more, so that'd be five. Well, it's seventy-eight, at seventy-eight, um, dollars a day, times five, that's like eleven grand a month. Hundred and forty a year, just for five.
Are they only planning on sending any males, not females?
Right, well, right now we're full on female.
Oh.
We're maxed out, we're trying to get, we're trying to get one released today. I gotta talk to Ellen about that and get her release, so we want to keep one female bed open in case we have like a domestic at night or something. Cause I don't want them sleeping on the floor or anything, you know, on the mattress, so.
So explain to me what you said about the twenty-one dollars on the transportation.
So, well, I'd love to pay the guard twenty-one, but I think we can only pay him our, the normal wage because you still got to cover insurance and worker scuff and all that, right? So I would assume that's what that extra four dollars or five dollars an hour would cover.
So they would, you would.
They're going to pay us twenty-one.
Right, so if you had to transport somebody, say, three inmates or whatever, um, at twenty-one dollars an hour, then they would send the check to Mineral County, it's not necessarily going to go to the individual. I mean, yeah, it's just reimbursement, so, right, yeah.
Yeah, what's, yeah, it'd be like how K L N bills for whatever, or Kim would get with K L N and however they bill it, then they would pay that, yes. No, it's not going to the.
Right, yeah, yeah, so I mean, we'll pay the.
Correct.
The, whoever transported, but they might only be making eighteen dollars an hour, but we'll be reimbursed for twenty-one dollars.
Correct, and that will cover our FICA and our comp.
Oh yeah, I thought she was, that she was going to hire some auctioneer.
We don't need one. I talked to Cashman, we don't need one. It's just we need to ship.
Okay, I'll get with you afterwards. So.
And hopefully they'll, they'll plan, give you advance notice when there is such a transport meeting.
Talking to the agents in Missoula, they're trying to give us guys that don't have to be transported a lot. Like they're just waiting to go to prison or something. Cause they understand and they understand we got kind of shorted on that. So, um, they, but like if we have to, if somebody gets hurt, we have to take them to the hospital. You know, we got to get two to go and then, but if they go to the hospital, then they want to be called and they may send agents out to relieve our guys so that they can watch them, so.
So we have. So we have to pay for their medical?
No.
No, you're saying when they need to go to the hospital, be transported, they still require two, two attendees with them while they escort them.
No, I see what she's saying, anyway.
No, it says on here, the local government shall provide federal detainees with the same level and range of care inside the facility as provided to state and local detainees.
Right.
The local government is financially responsible for all medical care provided inside the facility.
We don't offer medical care inside the facility.
Well, what if one of them gets sick here, or they come in and all of a sudden, oh, I have a toothache.
Right.
And we gotta take them to the dentist, and it's our responsibility to pay for the dental?
We don't, we don't provide that inside.
We don't provide it, so I think that.
We take them out of the facility to get that.
And then they would have to pay that. But I will clarify that, and I think that was one of Ellen's questions. So I will clarify that.
Yeah, because a lot of jails have in-house.
Yeah, Missoula.
Medical care and doctors and nurses right there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, care as well as cost of medical supplies over the counter medication and any prescription medications routinely oh stocked by this facility.
Which we don't have.
And then the federal government's financially responsible for all medical care outside the facility provided to their detainees.
Yeah, I think we need to make sure.
I'll maybe clarify it.
What's the, their other medical in the US courthouse? I guess the US courthouse is the one in Missoula, they're talking about the Russell.
Yeah.
What's V T C, other V T C?
No idea.
I thought it stands for veterans something or other. So after thirty-six months, you can request a rate adjustment.
Or if they come back and do that big project that they're thinking of doing.
Yeah, see, what that V T S means too, I'm curious.
All right, V T C?
Oh, yeah, V T C.
All right. And then, we've talked earlier, and I know Laurie had asked what the cost would be for the doors, we finally got an official bid from D I S. For that, for the three doors. This is what I figured it'd be, around ten.
So that far right column is kind of their discount, the actual number would be ninety-four fifty?
That's what I'm assuming. Or why put it there?
Okay.
It's a frequent flyer, just kind of. Should be.
Least they could do. But that would be this door, the backside door, and then evidence room door.
And is this the one that, no, the marshals might do that other thing, the guard check thing?
That's what I'm holding out for.
Okay.
But if they don't ever do that project, then we'll talk later, but right now I'm holding out for that, but this, just because we're having door issues and then, you know, if, if and when I have soul moves, which I still don't know if they are for sure or not.
And we still don't have.
They're working on that building in Saver.
I was told October one, but I don't think they're gonna be done by then.
Does Ellen have the things done for the other children?
Something you might want to check with her, because.
Yeah, are you gonna be seeing?
I'm trying to get a hold of her today, because we, she was supposed to get an inmate removed yesterday, and she didn't, so we're open today, we can get her out. Female inmate out of our pair, and taking that.
But I know Ms. Jackson wants to talk to you, are you going upstairs?
Yeah, I'll go upstairs.
So if you see Ellen, you might say the commissioner's wondering.
Where we're at with that.
Yeah. You'd actually get that done before they leave.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Kind of hard to like ask for payment when they're not even here anymore. I mean, we still can, it's.
Have to be careful what I say.
Logical.
All those says, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Wish in one hand.
You loggers have all the good lines.
That was cool.
So this, the, the cost for this will come out of your, the COVID monies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which we're at, I think she said there's a hundred and ten thousand or something like that, yeah? Because there was, the nine-one-one was a little lower than we thought. It was a hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety or something.
When does that move forward?
The nine-one-one, we're moving forward now, because they had training the other day. And Tiffany's assigned to that project, it's just too much for me to be, I mean, they meet like two times a week on the phone and camera system. And I was like, no, Tiffany, you take this, because she knows what the, the computers and all that. So she's running with all that, and then we had to buy headsets for them all, I just bought all those for them. And then they'll be getting trained and all that on those and.
Any, any progress on the Verizon Tower?
Yes, we're coming to it.
Oh.
A lot of progress.
So do we need to make?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would like to vote on this, if you guys would allow me to buy it or get it going.
Yeah.
I'd like to get going with them. If this price seems reasonable to you guys?
Are they, and then D I S?
They'll do it.
Like, if somebody leaves, they'd be, it'd be easy for them to deactivate the little.
Right, and actually, either we can or call them and they'll do it. And we can even time it, let's say there's a repairman coming, we can give him one and say, this is worth it.
For two days or something?
Right. And that way, we don't have to sit at the door with them.
Right, right.
Or give them a key and he walks off with the key.
Right.
If he walks off the fob, we just deactivate the fob and it's garbage. Now, they cost about a dollar a fob, but, you know.
That's not as bad, but a key is more than that.
Well, and they wander around, and we got hundreds of them out there right now.
Yeah.
They said the other day.
I think they still have mine.
Some guy from Missoula walked, yeah, see? Some guy from Missoula walked through, and we're like, who are you? What he was like, like a cover agent, we didn't realize, but.
I always thought I'd come, want to come back and say hi, but I never have yet, I just knock on my door.
Always welcome. There's a doorbell now.
Yeah, the doorbell. Okay, well, so. It says possible action, should we take action, allow him to move forward with D I S? D I S is our technology provider anyway, and they can do it with a discount.
I would make a motion that we approve the access control system through D I S for the total of ninety-four fifty fifty.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, all right. What's your idea for maybe how to get applications?
Well, we were thinking, um, some of them, some ideas were spitballing around, and of course, it's what we're all, great minds are all in a room here to think about.
Spitballs?
Spitballs and, and, um, I know in other agencies when I worked, um, maybe a, now, just before you guys drop out of your seats, two hundred dollar bonus to any county employee that recommends somebody, and then we hire that person, then that employee that referred that person to come and work for us gets a two hundred dollar bonus for referring that person to us.
Even Wayne, he goes to the talking bird a lot, I'm gonna find somebody that wants to.
But they gotta hire, just refer and don't get you the money.
You're gonna make it tough.
Right, I know. And we gotta hire them, and then they get it. And then that employee, we thought, the first number we threw out was, you get a, if you become a new employee, that should get a thousand dollar bonus, become employee, five hundred day of hire, five hundred at the end of your year probation. No, we're not rocking set on the numbers, but that was Wayne's number. I said, okay, I'll throw it out and see what happens.
And where will this money come out of?
I don't know. I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing.
Taking the words right out of my mouth.
I'm just throwing.
With the new evaluation coming out, we don't know where we're gonna be sitting, so.
But like, you know, as, as we said, we're.
Yeah.
We've got the jail up and running, I've got, we got twenty-one inmates right now, more than half are state, so we're getting sixty-five a day for those, and then we got, we're gonna have five feds, which that's eleven grand a month, that's a hundred and forty grand a year if we keep them for the year. You know, so we got money coming in, eventually, you know? I know there's the thing, is can we keep it open? I don't foresee any wage shutting up, other than I can't hire employees.
Right, right.
That's the only thing that's gonna hurt me, is I can't fill the, now, we do have interviews set up for four people. Hope, we're hopefully.
Three.
What date is that, Donna?
I thought the.
Tuesday the twentieth, oh, yes, I haven't reached the fourth one yet, yeah.
One's an employee, so.
I, I do want to let you know that every email I send out to all county employees, I always include, don't forget, we have deputy and dispatch positions open.
No, I saw that.
Yeah, okay, I want to let you know, I'm just always hammering county employees, don't forget, we have these openings.
But.
So, after your original little idea, are you, so, is it your thought that there are a lot of current employees that know people or nephews or cousins?
I don't know, maybe. I just, maybe it would motivate.
It's kind of a common I Q, throwing it down there.
And, okay, so, it's not like we're gonna get a whole bunch of them, so why don't we, we can use some of the, can we use some of the Affordable Care Act? Put five thousand to the side for the Affordable Care Act money, or even three thousand to the side for the Affordable Care Act money that we have? And say, okay, here's a couple of two hundred, and then here's that.
Well, we see in Jessica, she might know if that, that's allowable, yeah.
I'm just trying to, Road Department, whatever, that refers somebody that's got a nephew or, whatever, and we end up ironing them.
Good.
They get a two hundred dollars.
And you may see a few more with the mill closing down now, I don't.
Well, they were at that, I was gone, but they were at that thing.
Job fair?
Yep.
Job fair.
Did they get a lot of people come to their table?
No, there wasn't a huge amount, but I didn't feel like there were a lot of people at that job fair.
No, there wasn't.
No, and so I would say, no, we have one that I really am expecting to get an application from for detention, but.
Wayne thought that some female at dispatch, but I guess, she was worried about having to run at the academy, and he's like, no, 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 dispatchers don't run and do physical work at the academy.
There just weren't a lot of people.
No, no, no.
So it was a pretty good turnout of people there saying, hey, we got jobs.
Yeah, I thought so too.
And we're talking about high schools, you know, towards the, and when they're getting ready to graduate, we're gonna hit up all the seniors and have meetings with them, and ones that don't go to college, or aren't planning on going to college, or the military, then, hey.
I think you get into school and kind of give a spiel about county sheriff positions from jail to detention to.
Yeah, we've talked to them, they want us in the classrooms, we're just trying to organize it, you know, they just opened up, so I'm waiting before we start bugging them.
Were any of those, were any of those, uh, road applicant people interested in other county jobs besides the road?
No, and I offered those up and I get a.
Eighteen dollars an hour compared to fifteen dollars an hour?
Yeah, but I, well, people do not scoff at fifteen dollars an hour, I, you know, I'll say that, nobody says fifteen dollars an hour, not at all. I think, um, maybe people are afraid of the hours, maybe people are afraid of the weekends.
Grating yard.
Yeah, because I.
What is a unique position, you gotta have a personality to work it, you gotta have that type A personality.
There's some people that like working nights.
Right.
I'm one of them.
But you gotta be able to work with inmates.
I ain't working for fifteen.
You know, a lot of people are scared of those inmates when they get in. Well, we've had a couple of people we hired that we thought were good, and they were good, they're good people, as in a person, but they're just not good with taking charge of an inmate and being authoritative when you need to be authoritative.
It's gotta be kind of intimidating.
It is.
If you're not, haven't been around law enforcement.
Right.
Don't know what.
Right.
What you're supposed to do and what you're not supposed to.
Well, and some of those inmates are kind of crafty, that's why.
Right, and some of them are, some are naturals, we've got one new hire, the guy, everybody loves him, and he's doing great. You know? We did get two back from the academy, they did well at the academy, and then the other two will probably go in January.
And you say they're there two weeks?
Two weeks, they do a week, they do a week on the computer here, and then two weeks at the academy, I believe it is, yeah.
That's dispatch and detention. But no fire.
But all the dispatchers have gone so far, except if we hire the new one that we got in the slot for. And then the jailer, we'll, we have two more that need to go, and then if we hire the two, then, so, four to go.
You know, and we did have, I talked at length with one female from I F G who would be a wonderful dispatcher, she's a really hard worker, so I doubt that she's gonna go home and sit, but her concern was, I don't want to work graveyard. So that's why I've just thrown that in there, that that sometimes is the issue.
Yeah, we just can't, but we gotta tell them that it rotates, you only, you only have to do it.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, you can find somebody to swap with you, like, we have a, we have a personnel right now in the jail that thought he was gonna love day shift and realized, oh, there's a lot that goes on, I want to go back to nights. So he, I just said, well, find somebody to swap, if somebody on nights will swap, swap, I don't care. And so he's like, yeah, okay, so he's gonna make some phone calls and swap. We're pretty open with it, but you just gotta find somebody, I, I always with the schedule say, I don't care what happens, as long as the shift is covered.
Somebody's there, yeah.
Yep, so do you guys want to move stuff around, just make sure it's covered? Or it's your butt if it's not, so. They all seem to be adults and are handling it fine so far.
Good.
Yeah.
Uh, we got, we're dealing with our COVID issues, but we're getting through it, so. Verizon Towers. So Verizon doesn't own the tower anymore, they sold it, but the company that owns it, um, part of the agreement is they honor every contract that Verizon had made prior to selling it. So that's why Verizon was saying, you gotta get this done before.
Right.
That drop-off date, because if that drop-off date comes and we don't have it done, then this company's gonna charge us big bucks.
Yeah.
So I talked to that company, and I gotta jump through some hoops, um, I had to sign onto their program and register, and then, um, I gotta get the contract from Verizon sent to the company, because he's like, are you sure there's a contract? And I'm like, Verizon said they found one, and he goes, well, I need to see it, and I'm like, okay, and then I gotta get.
Did you get one of your hot little hand yet?
No, Verizon never sent it to me, that's, I'm trying, he just said on the phone, oh, I found it.
Oh.
I go, great. And then he goes, then later he goes, oh, but we sold your, we sold that, so he called this guy, so, anyways. But the good news is the new company honors the contract, so he's just gotta see it instead. And then we gotta figure out, he wants me to have the radio guy come and figure out how high up the tower it needs to go, which I'm assuming towards the top, so. Pretty much what I told him, I said, how high can we go? And if you want to add a few more feet on that tower, feel free.
Yeah.
Anyhow, so he just goes, well, I need, we need a, somebody to tell us, I need an idea of where we're going with this thing, I was like, all right. So, and, so, yeah, so. so, it just getting ahold of Verizon to, uh, get that contract.
Get it.
Which I know, I can't see being a problem, but we'll find out here. And then, the only thing I'd let you know is we're snooping around, and it'll come out a nine-one grant money, we're gonna put in for a grant, first of the year. Right now, we're, we have an ADSI CAD system, it's where deputies get dispatched, and where we do our reports, it used to be SWIFT, boom, then, a prior administration went in with a couple smaller counties, and they got this ADSI thing, which is out of Georgia, it's a small company. We, because we're a brand-new department, we were never trained on it, and we've had nothing but trouble with it, to get trained on it, it would cost us thousands and thousands of dollars, they won't come and give us free training, or even help us with it, um, so we're stumbling through it, and it's, it doesn't talk to each other, dispatch and, and the deputies, and also, um, we can't run names through it, like, we have to use a third-party, uh, C G N thing to run a name or a plate, um, and I'm looking at you, 'cause you understand what I'm talking about, where normally, a CAD system, it's all intuitive, so if I run it, that would attach it right to my report and all that, now, they gotta go over here, run it, get charged, we get charged like five cents a name or whatever, and then he's gotta ask dispatch, "Oh, now can you rerun it and attach it for me?" And so now, we're getting double-charged because, it's, so basically, I wanna get rid of it, I talked to Missoula, which is, I don't know why the prior administration didn't talk to Missoula, Missoula has what they call New World, which, Missoula, Flathead, City of Missoula, County Missoula, Yellowstone, Billings P D, all the bigger agencies have this New World, 'cause they've used it, it works great, talked to Flathead, yeah, they love it, everybody loves it, so, we called them, I called Missoula nine-one, 'cause that's actually who owns the system, their nine-one dispatch is separate than the county and the city, it's their own business, it's basically Lori Dove, their mani, emergency management runs their nine-one system for the whole county, and that's what Billings does too.
And that's because they serve the county and the city.
And the city, and, right.
And for service.
And all that, so, talking to them, I said, "Can we piggyback on you, kinda like we're piggybacking off Sanders with this thing," and they said, "Absolutely you can, 'cause then we can talk, like when we're doing this, this missing person case, our reports don't jive with their reports, with their detective reports and all that, because we're on a totally different system, we deal more with Missoula than we ever do with Sanders and them." But it still costs pretty petty, now, it's cheaper than it would if we did it all on our own, but it's still expensive, and so, they do have a payment plan, and they also have grants, and the emergency management lady for Missoula says she's on the nine-one board, and she says that she will help us, uh, with the paperwork, to try to put in for the grant to get either all the money or some of the money at least.
What, what the, when prior administration went in with the ADSI, what's the contract term on that for?
So, we found that out, so when I called ADSI, this is how they are, I go, "What's our contract?" "Oh, it's a five-year contract." "Oh, it is?" "Oh, well," and they go, "Yeah, you got three more years left." "Oh, well, can I see that?" "Oh, well, we can't find it right now, we're looking for it," and then we found it, I had Sean go through a file cabinet, and he found the contract, and, and it's all signed, he took it up to Ellen and read it, it's actually a two-year contract with three years, year to year, and is on, if you give them a thirty-day notice before one of the three years, you can be out of it, so the thirty-day notice would be in October, so, next year, October, we would, 'cause this year, we're not ready to move on it, so, next year, we'd be ready to move, all they do is they give a thirty-day notice and boom, we're out of it, and it doesn't cost the same.
Did they jump into the ADSI, 'cause that's when Sanders County's bookings for our inmates and all that, that was kinda the reason, was to be on the same page?
Yes, I'm assuming that's probably possibly, but, you know, and it's so cheap, it's cheaper than, I mean, it's expensive, but it's cheap, they went in, and that's why we piggybacked, our server, Sanders County controls the server, we have the backup server, and, uh, but, we can't do anything unless Sanders County agrees to do it, like, we wanted to run names through it, they could make that happen, but Sanders County doesn't want that now.
Why not?
Because they just run it through dispatch, they don't use their computers and their trucks for that, they just do it the old-school way, so they're like, "Well, we don't need to do that." Well, we do use our computers with traffic stops and everything else, and reports, but, but Missoula's already got wide open, so, we would just get it all, you just connect to their server. So anyways, we're sniffing around that.
Yeah, I would help you with the paperwork.
Hopefully, we get the grant, but I'm just letting you know, if you hear Sanders County rumble, or somebody asks you something, you're aware of what's going on, so, um, but I thought it was underhanded how ADSI kept saying five-year contract, it's not a five-year contract, it's a two-year contract with three years, year to year, so...
I'd like to say I'm very thankful that I'm not the one responsible for that contract, as our contracts are all over the place.
When we'll get it to you.
Well, it's okay, it's just like one of those things, though, where somebody will come to me and say, "I know you have that contract, I wanna see that contract," I don't have those contracts.
Well, and in this one, once we get it worked out, the details worked out of this one, we'll get it signed as soon as possible, and then, um, and done, so that we can start upcharging him, 'cause right now, we're, I think, we're only charging him fifty-eight dollars a day or something, so, I wanna get to that seventy-eight dollars, but I'll ask the medical, ask the C V T or whatever, T C V, or V T C.
Um, in doing the time cards, deputies, time shifter, and those, they were good, but the detention and dispatch, there was a lot of them that were still wrong, but a lot of it is, um, on some of them, your days, like, detention starts at seven in the morning till whatever, well, then, the shift differential doesn't start till eight, so you're getting one hour of graveyards, and then eight hours of days, and then three hours of, so, if...
I thought we just were gonna do in one...
What's her number?
Well, yeah, with the deputies, it's just sixty-five cents.
Well, why don't we pick a one number for the jailers, or jailers and dispatchers too?
Well, they want, or, this is the way Kim, she said on dispatch and detention, that if you work days, you don't get the sixty-five cents, that's the way they wanted to do it, but, it doesn't matter to me, I just want to have no problems.
Right.
You know, so...
And I say, heck with all the shifts, just say, you get...
This is what you get, and hell, what's your shift?
Right, because who would turn that down, why would Kim say, "Oh, they don't want that?"
Yeah, well, you know, she was just saying that, that some of them, you know, that...
Because they're working twelve-hour shifts, so they're gonna go in and out of...
In and out of one anyways.
And it's confusing, so, like you said, just say, "You know what, you getting sixty-five cents."
For your hours worked.
Worked.
So, what they need to do then on their time cards is...
What the deputies did.
Is what the deputy did, and, and they don't even, you don't even have to have graves and swings.
Right.
Just put...
Hours worked.
Your hours worked, and, and that's kinda what Wayne did on his, is he put so many hours times sixty-five and, anyway, but, yeah.
Well, I'll have him, school them, he's off till Monday, I'll have him school them.
Yeah, just have them...
Yep.
I mean, like, on their time cards, over here on the side, they have, and Mondays through Wednesday or whatever, um, and then they have days, I, I would just do away with that, and just, just have them put them all under graves.
Yeah.
All their hours worked under graves.
Sounds good.
And so, um, yeah, because there was some of them that was flip-flopped, and, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, 'cause I thought this is how we had it.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me. Yeah? So, I can call D I S now and say, "We're good to go," and get that process started? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is eleven o'clock on the dot, and so here we are with Jessica Conley, and when the, when D O R decided to do that change for I F G, they called me, and I was in the dead zone, so it was a voicemail, and then I heard about what it was, and I called him back, and then he'd left and went on vacation, said, "Call this guy," instead, so I ended up passing the buck to Jessica, knowing that she understands better their D O R talk with valuations, times this equals dollars, so, Jessica's been handling that for us, and on that front, what have you learned?
Okay, so we got our, um, recertified, um, taxable valuation last night, like, at six, and, so, a couple things, so, just to start from the beginning, so, this really has nothing to do with I F G closing, right, so everybody understands really what happened, so, and, and the reevaluation is on personal property tax, so, in the prior year, the Department of Revenue valued their personal property tax, which is really their equipment, right, and they valued it at eight-point-five million, so then, this year, um, you know, they went in, they revalued it, and along, and everybody gets these notifications, and they sent, they sent the notification, and they said, "Okay, this year, we're gonna value it at twenty-three million," a really big increase, and so, I F G, you can, um, you can, you know, kinda, you could, if you apply by August ninth, you can argue that, and you can say, "No, I want you to reassess it and, and look at it again," so, anyway, so from what I understand, they actually did apply within their time period, so I think it was August seventh that they did submit their protest, I guess, and so then, this, this is the Department of Revenue, so let me grab this, I guess I have one other question for them, hello? Hi, Zach. How about if I put you on, how about if I put you on speakerphone, since I'm actually in the meeting right now? Oh, so you're thinking you don't have them, you don't have, do you have the answer just to my basic question, the one that I asked you earlier? Okay, so, it's pretty simple, so if they leave all of their equipment intact, they shut down their mill, they leave everything intact, they don't dismantle it, is the valuation still gonna be the same? Unless they move the equipment off of the property to a different site or something? Okay, that was, that's my question, all right, I, that's all I need, Zach. Okay. All right, thank you so much, okay, bye-bye, bye. All right, so, so then, I F G, they said, "Okay, no, I don't wanna, twenty-three million is too high," so they went to the Department of Revenue, they negotiated with the Department of Revenue, whatever it was, Department of Revenue said, "Okay, we'll assess it at ten million," so it really went from eight-point-five to ten, is their personal property valuation, okay, so, that's great and fine, but I think the thing that was so disappointing was the fact Department of Revenue took so long to get us that information, right, so, I mean, that's the, that's crazy, that's where I think they should get a letter or something from the commissioners, 'cause that is just...
Why isn't there a date, if our, if our budgets have to be final, why, there ought to be a date that says...
So, I've asked everybody at the Department of Revenue, local government services, don't they have like a budget, like a calendar, how we have a calendar, and every single thing has to be done by a certain date, and I've never gotten it answered, so, I don't know, maybe Ellen could look into it, but it just is, that was the really disappointing part.
Yeah, 'cause they sent us their numbers, and we did our budget based on it, and they even, can't, "Oh, these might not be the right numbers, you might wanna wait."
Right, I mean, and not just us, the schools and everybody, so, anyway, so that was the, that was the frustrating part, um, so then, but, mind you, built into our budget everywhere, you know, across our county, is the twenty-three million.
Mm-hmm, right.
Right, 'cause that's, that's the valuation that we did our budget on, right, so it went from twenty-three to ten, but, just so you know, it actually went from eight-point-five in the prior year to ten, okay, so how, so then, so, with that being said, so then the question, you know, so you hear about this, then the question truly is, if you guys recall, when we get our valuation, we have a taxable, taxable valuation on one line item, but then we have newly taxable property, and I think we talked about this, right, so, if that personal property that they increased so much, if it fell on that newly taxable line item, which Department of Revenue wasn't able to tell me where it was gonna fall, but, now we know, but if it falls on that newly taxable line item and, and it goes away, that is money that we cannot recoup, it's gone, versus, so let's say, so, let's say, it wasn't any newly taxable, so, it was newly taxable property, right, that's how it was, that's how it came down, once we have our thing, so, with that being said, newly taxable property, so we have, the county can levy so much, really, pretty much, and then, we get, um, a percentage for inflation that we can add to our existing tax base, whatever, right, and so the tax people, the, all the taxpayers will pay a little bit more, the only way the county really gets to increase their revenue, really increase it over this small percentage, you know, inflation, is with new, new taxable property, okay, and so, that twenty-three million, that big jump from the eight-point-five to twenty-three, they had put under newly taxable property, so what that means, and we'll look, look at it in a second, but what that means is, even if we recertify, you don't get the money, it's gone, so, we'll look at that now, see if we can understand, so, so we'll look at, take the first two pages, we'll just look at the countywide, so, we have, we have our countywide, and then we have countywide recertification, okay, so, you can come down here, so you can see, so on line five, you can see that the total taxable valuation dropped from twelve-point-six million to twelve-point-two million, okay, but, look at line eight, line eight also dropped from eight-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand to five-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. So now, go all the way, go to the bottom, so, prior to this recertification, we were gonna levy one-point-three-eight-three million dollars, of that, one-point-three-eight-three million, ninety-seven thousand of it was newly taxable property that we get to add to our, you know, we get to add it, but now...
Where's the ninety-seven?
Right here. Right here.
Just off the bottom.
Nineteen.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Do you see?
Yeah.
So, that's how that one-point-three million broke down, it was one-point-two million of kind of like existing tax people, plus ninety-seven thousand of new taxable property, so now, since all of that, most of that I F G was new, new property, go over here and look, so now, so the amount that we can tax our people, pretty much stayed exactly the same, right, the one-point-two-eight-five to one-point-two-eight-five, what dropped was the newly taxable property, and so with that being said, because all of the, the devaluation came in that newly taxable line item, there's nothing we can do about it. line item, there's nothing we can do about it. So if we recertify, right? So here, so we were going to get, we were going to get 1.383 million prior, right? That's what we have budgeted. If we recertify, we're going to get 1.344 million. We're going to get less, because it's new, it's new taxable property that has just been vanished, right? So we're going to get less. So one, there's no reason to recertify to get less. The only reason to recertify would have been if it wasn't newly taxable property, it was in the line above, and then the question to the commissioners would have been, we could recertify, and it would pass on that loss to all the other taxpayers. But it is not a loss, since it was newly taxable property, that we can pass on. Does that make sense?
That 97,000 to 58,000, that newly taxable property, now are we focused only on IFG, or are we talking about the whole county and newly taxable?
Yeah, so now we can look at that. So now if we understand that, right? And we understand, right, there's no reason to recertify, because it's not going to help us at all.
Right.
Right? So now, let's go look at this sheet. So on this sheet, we have, here's the, this is what we have adopted, this is our current budget, and this is the recertification. And so the total loss, so this is, this is super interesting, you guys. So right here on this mill change, right above the total, if we were to recertify, we would get $5,511 more. Because that's the only part related not to the new taxable valuation. Okay? But anyway, so this is, this is the loss, this is what we'll look at. So we'll, I propose we leave everything like it is, and what will happen is, the tax revenue that comes in will just fall short from what we budgeted. And so, for example, in the fair, the revenue should fall short 698. 39,000 for all of our countywide funds in total, and then down below are other funds that aren't countywide, but very well may be based on like the countywide mill value. So like, the weed, they, their taxable, their mill value is the countywide mill value, so that will change. So like, we will lose 821. The big one that will affect us is our permissive health, that's a really big one. So the only thing you could do, if you wanted to do anything, is, you know, we could like, rework the budget, right? We could come down and have a budget meeting and amend our budget, decrease our taxes. It would be through a budget amendment at this point, since the budget's adopted. We could come, you know, do an amendment and decrease our tax revenue, and then decrease some expenditures if we wanted to, or you just leave it. But that's the only thing.
Can I question for a second?
Yep.
So with the ARPA funding, there is revenue loss within that. Kind of like I was saying yesterday, is that, you know, we don't necessarily want to have to dip into those funds for that, because it's for improvements within our communities, not necessarily having to take that, but that is an option. You know, as I learn more about this process, and we actually get those applications and proposals put together, that is an option to kind of recoup that loss for the county so that we're not eating it at this level. So, you know, just kind of keep that in the back of your minds as you go through this as well, but, you know, I mean, I understand it's probably a big pain in the butt to go back and redo the whole budget system again, so that is an option, if we can start exploring that, if that's...
So we can offset both losses with the ARPA money then?
Yeah, yeah, I believe that, you know, because it's a revenue loss, and whether that's to the small businesses or directly to the county, I don't think that it makes a difference where that loss is down, just it would be something that we would have to apply for.
If we leave this as is, with detention, we'll be operating on $10,473 left, is that right?
Correct.
We better make sure they know that.
See, that's my, that's the thing. So we could, you know, not today, but like in the next couple of weeks or something, we could come in and cut, it wouldn't be that hard, right? It wouldn't be. We would just come in, use this as our base, and just be like, "Okay, detention, you need to cut 10,400, or do you want to cut it?" And then we would decrease our tax revenue, decrease their expenditure, and we would still be in sync.
Same with like, public safety, all of them.
You could do that. And then, if it wins, say like if Emily can get that money, then, you know, but I, I don't know if we'd want to bank on it. I don't know how long it would take to get it.
That I'm not sure, because we haven't even got our direct treasury deposit yet.
How is that going? Since, how is that going? Do we know?
Last time I checked with Kellin, she was about halfway through it. And that was last Friday.
They wanted, they had some weird things they wanted from her. A video of her holding up her social security card.
You have to do like a whole face scan and everything, from what I understand.
Yeah. So Jessica, back to the page 1 and page 2 of this, the 97,880 versus the 58,428.
Yes.
That's a difference of 39,380, which I see over here on this page, but where's the 45,000?
So these are, so these are countywide. So like, if you look, say our countywide, so we, in our adopter budget, we were allowed to levy 109.3 mills, right?
Okay.
And so here's 109.3 mills. So this is its own little section.
Okay.
These are funds that aren't voted, that are operated by the county, that aren't permissive, they're just called countywide funds, and...
Oh, okay.
They get those, they get those mills allocated.
When you mention weed, it's just that two voted mills.
So weeds down below. General fund is 20 voted mills.
Right, okay.
And then that one's, the next one's permissive, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
But they were all affected, because they either had their own valuation that we got a new one of, or they're based on the countywide. So that's why I put them on here. Not that they all affect us directly, but...
Yeah, okay. Now I got you.
Back on the, also on the ARPA thing, they were, I was up at Sanders County yesterday, the TV districts are applying for like $220,000.
Really?
To upgrade their, whatever. But I just thought you might want to know, since St. Regis is on the verge of going away.
What do you mean?
What?
I'd say it has gone up.
Yeah, have you guys done your resolution yet?
Superior needs an upgrade. And they keep, I wonder what part of ARPA it is?
Is that broadband thing, I wonder?
It's not under the broadband. They were going to put it under the direct one from the treasury, as like some improved nutrition or something. And I don't know how it all works together, but it's almost like, it almost seems to me like you could word it almost in any way, and if it was a decent project, and get it approved. But they are, I think...
But you still have to have a TV board, and you still have to have a place to put it.
Well, you could be the, the quishers could be the board in the meantime.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so you still have to have somewhere to put it.
All that, but I just want to throw that out there. But even, so maybe Superior.
Yeah.
Or whoever.
Yeah.
But it would be a good use, and maybe...
There's a part of ARPA that's only for water and infrastructure, but then I learned later that there's a federal side of ARPA that's got more latitude.
And that's one that Emily's talking about, like housing, like low-income housing, which I think is, I don't know, that's what I would probably use a big chunk of that money for. So what else? Does that make sense?
So, so in summation, your recommendation to us is to...
Not recertifying.
Not recertify. And then, when we start to have any kind of a balancing issue, to have some kind of amendment?
I think that would be a really wise, frugal thing to do.
And that amendment money would borrow from Peter to pay Paul, or where does it come from?
No, I thought we were going to cut their budget.
Okay. Or do Emily's idea of ARPA re...
Yeah, if we can get that, but I would, I would, I guess, I mean, we could, you know, we need, you guys should follow up with Kellin and make sure she has the money. So then Emily could do that. Once, once she has the money, it would be fast, right?
Well...
Because, I think, because...
Yes and no? Because we still have to apply. So you still have to apply, that would be, those are, that's money that you can start doing modern infrastructure projects with, but then to do the other ones, you have to apply with direct allocation. And then, so there's a small match on those, and those are ones you actually apply to the Department of Commerce.
Oh. So... So they are using the money that's direct from the feds? So...
Yeah, for that.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't, yeah. So I don't know. So you guys will need to decide if you want to wait to see if Emily can get reimbursed for that.
How long would it take?
Right? Or you guys, the other option is to hold like a budget meeting with certain departments, if you wanted to, and cut their budget by that amount. That's really...
Only two options.
That's it, it's more than a bunch of options.
The library, almost $4,000 hit.
And so, the conversation I had with the Department of Revenue guy, he said that they were, he didn't really say they were in a corner, but they had valued it at 23. Brandex said 2.5 million, they settled on 10. So you said this had nothing to do with them shutting down, but, so if any other business, your business, or anybody's business, was valued at that, I mean, that's, you know, it's 13 million more than what they settled on. So that is a big chunk of money. I mean...
Oh, it's huge.
So how did they arrive at that, is what I, I mean, that's the point I'm getting at. So you don't just, you don't just come up with 13 million and say they've done this much improvement. They have done a lot of, had done a lot of improvement. Where did they arrive at?
I have no idea how they, you know, like, they had to have shown some sort of proof. Like, I've argued my tax bill before with the Department of Revenue, and like, just say, a house that we built, right? They had it miss, they had it, too many square feet. They had 300 square feet more than what it actually was. So you called them, I showed them proof, I think maybe they came out, they remeasured, they readjusted my tax bill. And that's really what IFG did, but on a gigantic scale.
Yeah, yeah.
So they had to have shown, you know, some proof, or, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's not just a, they had to have shown something.
Well, it makes you wonder how it all, you know, it directly affects us, and it probably directly affected them. I mean, if I had a choice, I don't care who you are, 13 million dollars is a lot of money. I'd just said, hmm, maybe that ain't right either. Not that I like what they've done here, I don't, and I don't like them closing, but 13 million dollars is a big jump over what they were. Maybe somebody ought to make note of that to the governor or something. I mean, I don't...
Right. Like, how were they so far off to begin with, that would mess up everybody's budget?
Yeah.
Right?
And so quickly reverse that decision, and say, "Oh, we don't want you upping your taxes. Don't do that, because then we may lose, and you may win, and then we're going to be stuck with your 2.5 million."
Maybe.
You know?
Right.
Do you by chance know that number for the St. Regis school? The cut that the St. Regis school has?
The who?
The St. Regis school.
What about St. Regis school?
Well, because don't they get tax money as well?
I do not know the school's number. I just sent it to Tina. Tina has to do that on her own. I'm going to call her later and see how it's going.
I thought you had a ballpark estimate, though, didn't you? That about, about this much would be an impact on St. Regis school?
Yeah.
I think maybe Tina maybe had an estimate.
Uh-uh. Because if you think about it, that was working with Jamie prior, and so the estimate was a loss of 92,000 to the county as a whole.
Uh-huh.
But we have 85,000 right here. So something in that analysis that Jamie was trying to do at the Department of Revenue.
Well, that number you gave me before was a little bit off because of that.
It wasn't, it, when the numbers actually came down, it was different.
Okay.
So, so I don't know.
But typically...
But the county, the county's loss is about 85,000. So I would say the school is...
More or less than that? It would be more, because usually the schools are higher, higher than the county.
Actually, I guess, we were thinking...
I thought you had said 60,000 or more.
You told me before you thought 60,000.
For the school.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, the numbers we were working with just weren't...
They didn't write, they weren't right, at that time.
They didn't really reflect that, right? Because then, it, that would have left the county only losing 30,000.
That's about it.
And it didn't work out that way. So... So I think that's it. So you guys should, you have to decide to recertify or not recertify, and then to have a budget meeting to decrease their budget, or wait, and that's it.
Well, didn't you say that your recommendation was to not recertify?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't see, there's no reason to.
And then, we, yeah, we'll obviously need to meet with these, the library, and the planning, and public safety, and detention, and district court, but we really don't need to meet with the voted mill people, do we? Or let them know, because I mean, they're voted, and that's, that's the adjustment from the IFG adjustment. I mean, we can't really visit with them, say, "Hey, we think we need to cut your budget," because that's all set by the voted mills multiplied by the, we can't set that, that's set.
Yeah, but you might want to let them know too. Because either way, say like the weed, I mean, it's not a big deal. I probably wouldn't notify anybody under 1,000 or something. But the weed really will collect 821 dollars less in revenue than what we have budgeted. So in theory, we should adjust their revenue down 821 dollars, and then reduce their expenses 821.
Let the hospital almost 10,000.
Hospital wouldn't matter at all to us.
Right, right.
Yeah, that one, the cemetery...
The detention center.
Because they don't...
Yeah. I would say that you would.
Yeah, that's, how some of these voted, the voted ones.
Yeah, the hospital, the hospital, I wouldn't even, nothing to do there.
Right.
The cemetery too, you may want to, I would probably have Dawn notify them, and just say, "Hey, I just wanted to give you a heads up that you're actually, in revenue, you're going to collect 2,150 dollars less," just so they know.
Mm-hmm.
Ambulance, I would pass on ambulance, St. Regis fire, you could, they have some, they have quite a bit of cash reserves.
I mentioned this to Jerry the other day, he's on a fire right now, and he said, "Well, let me know how much it is, and I'll be cussing you."
Yeah, so you could let him know.
He's going to cuss you anyway.
They have lots of reserves, like it won't affect them. The park, I would have Dawn notify them. Permissive health, that's me. So the only way to fix that, is we can't decrease our health insurance, right?
Yeah.
That will be through a transfer from Pilt, probably. Same retirement, we, general fund. So really, so I would, just at the general, you could easily call in those people. District court. Comprehensive insurance, can't do anything. I almost just, I would probably, to tell you the truth, I'd probably just call in public safety and detention. They're the biggest ones. And they're the ones that have no cash reserve, that always spend the majority of their budget over. Yeah. But you guys can decide.
So Emily, would you, if you get a minute? So Emily, would, would you, if you get a minute, would you check on that TV thing? Because like she said, we could be the TV board until one was enacted. The two TV boards that I talked to down there, the two members, you know, they said, we would probably do it again, but would never got old of us to have a meeting or anything.
So you just need the third person?
Yeah, yeah.
You could be the third person.
You could?
No!
So Jessica, was that just a proposal that was submitted to them?
Yeah.
Or was that an application that was approved to be submitted? Because I know that they have out like a request for proposals.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I think it was one that they have approved.
Okay.
Really, I would call-
Or Carol, or Jennifer, is Jennifer the one working with them?
Yeah, yeah, because they're doing it all in-house, like the commissioners and, yeah, Jennifer or Carol.
Okay.
So if you see your name on the TV district, you know who nominated you. Unless Emily's gonna do it.
Me and Emily are both gonna get nominated, I'm saying. We'll be the best TV district ever then. We'll, like-
3 million dollars?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jill.
Yeah, okay.
All right. We will-
Is there something else you would want me to ask Jessica?
I think you do need to actually make it official to recertify or not, though.
Okay.
I would make the motion, we'd not recertify it this time.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all are in favor, so. You know what else? Somebody was here asking, Jessica, we have to ask her, right?
Oh, you were gonna ask about something for Dawn.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
His job, application idea, money.
If that could be pulled out of the ARPA.
Oh, ARPA, yeah. Oh, yeah, the, the money that his office earned for the-
We have in our capital projects.
The Corona or ARP or whatever, which one?
We have it at the CARES.
CARES, yeah, so he has something like 110,000 left in there. They're trying to, they're down, gee, jailers and dispatchers, I was wondering if that money could be, say, 4,000 dollars set aside to be utilized for possibly a, like a signing bonus to get somebody who wants, was interested in, that's an unfavorable usage.
No.
No, no.
It can't be. So it's a, I mean, unless we do a resolution and transfer it out, it's not, it's, it's in there, it's a cap, no.
Capital gain.
It's a capital project fund, so it has to be used for capital purchases at 5,000 dollars or more.
Okay.
So the answer's no.
Gotcha.
But, I mean, it doesn't mean you couldn't, but you'd have to do a resolution.
Well, he, he thought too, and then make it countywide, for countywide employees, if you had recommendations and someone was hired here, then they got a bonus too, in a lot of the same pot.
They got, like a referral-
Explain to Jessica what you were talking about, the-
Like a referral bo-
Signing bonus, referral bonus.
So we would do a, like what it is, the whole thing. So we do a, the suggestion was, any employee, county employee, road department, library, whatever, any county employee that refers somebody to us for the sheriff's office, and we hire that person, so let's say, somebody from the treasury refers their nephew, I hire him, then that person that referred him gets 200 dollars for the referral, because we hired him. If they refer and we don't hire them, then they don't get the 200 dollars. And then that person that gets hired, we'd offer them a thousand dollar signing bonus, which they get 500 a day they start, and 500 at the end of their year probation, if they make probation, they get the last 500.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to you guys, I don't see, I mean, it seems like something you might have to do in today's market, right?
I mean, I'm just trying to throw out ideas, because we're not getting money, it's either that or we raise the rate, but then you're gonna have to raise the deputies and mine, and everything's gonna be great, hectic, and we're not there yet. But, but, we gotta try something.
The only thing is, it can't come out of the capital projects, but I, it seems like a, you know, a good idea to try to get people to get a job here, just work.
Well, and I figure right now, we got, we got three spots open, a dispatcher and two jailers, for, as of right now, so theoretically, at the most, it's 3,600 dollars it would cost us for this project. Because if three were referred, that'd be 200 dollars times three, and then if, whether they're referred or not, they get, we're gonna advertise a thousand dollar signing bonus if you're hired. So bare minimum's gonna cost us three grand, but it could be 600 if they all threw it through.
And it might not even cost you that, unfortunately, because maybe they'll leave before their thing.
Right, they might not say that.
So hopefully it costs you 3,000.
So where would this come out of?
Well, we were talking that it would come out of that-
CARES.
CARES.
But she says it can't.
She said it can't.
It can't, because that's only for capital assets over 5,000.
And speaking of budgets, we just learned the IFG.
You know, it could come out of-
The decrease in the mills.
Out of their funds.
109.
We just cut it.
Yeah, we're just already looking at-
You can take it out of the general fund.
If you wanted to, you could take it out of like the commissioners.
Oh, man, we're already 23,000 dollars in home.
Yeah, go ahead, hit it. Buy share, or whatever. Okay. We are here with Andy Short on the Elk Run Two at St. Regis Minor Subdivision Final Plat Approval Action Item.
Thank you, I'll, Candace, take it away.
No, who knows, I would not.
Well, we gave you a raise this year, we thought that was part of it.
I know, I should-
Well, she had a caveat that no public speaking.
Oh, that's right.
She would do all the work.
I'm scared of these guys here.
Too bad, because you're such a good joke teller, but-
No, yeah.
All kidding aside, yeah, this is for the approval of the final plat application for Elk Run Two at St. Regis Minor Subdivision, to file the plat and all the accompanying documents. And so, you guys have seen this before, but not, I can't remember the last one we did, but basically, this, this report is all the conditions that you preliminary approved the subdivision with, and then how they're met, how each one of those things is met. And, you know, you know, really, it's one of those things where you guys don't even really need to look at these when we, when we get to this point. We, we, our goal is to make this as smooth as possible, where we show up with these and you just have to sign them, because we've, you know, we've told all the folks, the realtors that are, you know, bugging us every single day, that it's not ready yet, you were waiting on an item, blah, blah, and-
You want to make sure there's no hiccup down the line, people go to buy it.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, once you get this right, it's, everything is, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed.
So yeah, all the, all the typical conditions of approval, blah, 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 but anything stand out for any deviations or variances that we need to pay special attention to?
No. No, not, not, as far as any condition that exists, they, they met everything, and the road's built, the power's in, EQ is approved. I can't think of any-
I got it all right here, ready to go.
The, you know, the one, the one odd one about this was, there's a secondary emergency access, and so if you go out there, you may wonder to yourself, why are there two roads adjacent to each other? And the answer is, because the original one, right here, the original one goes on the state property.
Oh, is that?
And so instead of the developer going and getting permission to basically leave that easement there or something, they, they said, okay, yeah, we'll just move it on to our property, so the emergency access is, but you'll see them out there.
And that emergency access is the one with the gate on it? The one that's right there?
They might both have gates on them.
Just the one.
Just the one.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And so the, you said the other one runs right next to it?
Yeah, so there's a, if you go out there, you'll see there's a, there's an access that kind of comes up here.
Oh.
And this is state, one has their property, and so, yeah, and so, instead of getting permission to maintain that, they just moved it over.
Moved it over, okay.
It's an emergency access. That was a clerk and recorder, they got it right.
Oh, yeah, that one doesn't say clerk and-
Recorner.
Recorner.
A recorner.
One of our surveys came in recently, it said clerk and recorner. Yeah.
Can I remember who, who developed this one, Andy?
I think a gentleman out of Denver, what?
There, some town by there, Tella, I can't even pronounce it.
What is his name?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of his name, too.
I never met him, I was always, Sean was a consultant.
They call, he goes by Big Sky Acres, I would call him.
Yeah, there was like a Dunigan and a, I can't remember all the people that were part of that, but-
They bought John Cochran's place years ago.
Big Sky Acres, oh, there was like a Kevin Dunigan, and he'd been doing a lot.
Yeah, how did they find us? Because he's a big developer out of Colorado, right?
Yeah, I don't know, Jeff Noonan helped years ago, and they tried to do it.
Timna?
Timna?
Joelit?
Oh, originally?
Yeah.
This road is the next one.
Pre-2008 or something?
Yeah.
So this one doesn't have any hiccups, everything looks good, and thumbs up, and-
Yep.
All you'd like is for a motion to accept, and then signatures to follow?
Signatures, and then you guys are done, yeah.
They'll make a motion to approve the Elk Run Two at St. Regis Minor Subdivision Final Plat.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none are opposed.
Just sign it.
Yeah, when it was the best way, then.
So Judy, didn't that other, that old road, didn't that used to be the original road up to Johnny's house, too?
There it is.
Remember when you could come in from that way?
Yeah, when he first did it, yeah.
That's been a long time.
Well, he actually built that other road two years ago, where he put the pavement on it, I think he-
There'd be two other ones, hopefully.
Two other ones?
When they did that subdivision, Green Acres or whatever, they found out that road was on, for service back then, and he didn't want to get a permit or move it, so-
Yes, I did.
They made Cochran lane to access for that 40 acres, that Forest Acres.
I found him, he got his stuff done.
Gave him a very, it was too steep.
Well, you know, we had, we just, good, it was really awesome. Yeah, did he get, did he do the whole talk, did he send? I thought he did, because I said, where's your chalk? And he said, no, I didn't make it, and then something else happened.
Sure.
Anyways, yeah, he built that road and actually did a lot of that.
Just keep, so just, I'll tell people, just stay there and keep doing it until it comes out.
And then they did that trade, so the state and-
Oh, that was a good one.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay, he's, he's okay. My original intent was just, okay, and I thought, that's real nice. Yeah, I think he was pleased. It was a lot of fun. Twenty people. We did, and tell you, well, you see how I push it, sending emails every time, and she's, last time we had caught a few also, but not that many.
Yeah, I'll probably have like 100 slots in there every year.
Of course not, really, this is the only type of business that won't come. I'm gonna, of course, those girls, Mary, you're on it.
Three?
Yep.
Yep, I think that's, is that right?
Yep.
It's just three. We don't have, not two paper copies, huh?
No, there was only one, and Kellin said she was okay with that. There should be two, but there was only one.
Did that Alberton one come back to you yet, Andy?
I think so. I think so, Alberton.
Lower Meadows.
Yes, it did come in.
Yeah, haven't opened it up yet.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
The top of subdivision in Minno County? The one by Alberton?
It is in there.
I couldn't remember where the line was.
We're done, right? Are we done? Did you say he's all? Are we done?
Oh, I guess we're done. All right, thank you, Andy.